Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for being here and being online. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors. The district can be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas, on July 22, 2020, at the hour 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on July 17, 2020, at 9:30 AM in accordance with the Texans Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 551041, 551050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum today in the boardroom. We have myself, Director Friedman, Director Houston, and Director Alvalos. And I believe, joining us through Zoom, we have Director Dr. Lalong.
Howdy.
It gives us a full quorum. Not joining either in the room or on Zoom is Doctor, I'm sorry, Jason Starkey. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Invocation?
Our allegiance is to the Friday of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the daily blessings that you bestow on us. And we ask that you continue to guide us through these trying times as we deal with the coronavirus that has affected so many. We ask that you help those that are in most need of your mercy. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together once again. And we ask, as we get ready to start the meeting, we ask that for your continued guidance and wisdom so that the decisions made today will benefit our customers. In Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you, Robert. Moving on to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Board, staff.
Mr. Chairman, I do have, this Carlos Galván. I do have information for, we are getting prepared for the hurricane prevention, or the hurricane preparedness manual is being utilized at this time with staff and employees. We just wanted to mention that in getting prepared for this, we're trying to see what's going to happen between the next two, three days and then thereafter, the next five to six days. Because there's a couple of them that are headed this way. And I didn't have time to implement it in the agenda items because it just came around the corner about this week. So we are getting prepared. And if we do have to mandatory leave the area, we will get ahold of the board members. And we will provide the information, hoping that as in McAllen, where we stay all together and, you know, just keep together and plan for the best that nothing will happen. But hopefully, right in the next couple of days, we'll keep monitoring and preparing for anything that comes up between now and next week. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Our team has been working very well together. Even though I've been here at home, they've been calling me for the preparedness. On another note, I wanted to keep in mind that I think there will be workshop requests in the next budget items that are coming up. If there's any, anything that the board may request capital improvement that are pending, that if y'all would like some more information on that, just let us know as the item comes up. And again, the last one is the election applications are already available at the office. So those of you that are running, make sure they do have the applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Anyone else like to add anything at this time, board, staff, anyone in the audience? Thank you. Like to move along to item four. Consider discuss for possible approval the minutes of the regular meeting on July 8, 2020. Motion for approval by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Alvalos. For all those in favor.
Hi.
There are none opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Move along to item five, General Manager Report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I did provide a request of information on the with staff that have been tested, staff that has been negative, positive, still pending and recovered. If y'all have any questions on that one, please call me. But that's all I could provide. We did talk to legal counsel on it. And that's only information that I can provide for the board members at this time.
Yes.
There was nothing for executive session that we could have implemented for that information, except on this report here.
Yes.
Okay, now, the next one that I have here is a work schedule for the staff here at the main office. As I remember talking about this one at the last meeting, that we were going to present something to the board that the board might approve. And this is not the one. This is the one that the board, for the board's information that we're activating now. It's only for staff. This one doesn't have any hours that the board requested to pay out of the district's funds. We're trying to compromise employees to work at home and, you know, do the jobs that we can and staying away from each other as much as we can. And those two schedules are the ones that have provided. Now, we do come back and, as I mentioned at the other meeting, that we do have 10 hours that we would like to request. That would be at another date. We would get back to the board at another date. And that one will take board approval for providing 10 extra hours paid from the district's funds.
Okay.
And that's all I have for right now. Just wanted to make sure that, I think there might have been a confusion that we had attorneys or legal counsel to review this one. But this is not the one. It would be the one with the 10 hours that the water district would pay for the employees.
So you're basically trying to add 10 extra hours? Is that, I'm not real.
On this one, well, yes. If the board would approve that one, we would bring it at a later date. These schedules that I have here are just trying to improve our separation of employees as much as we can without asking the board to pay anything yet. So this one is just, we're testing it out and trying to find out if it's going to work properly for the next couple of weeks. If not, we'll come back to the board and present the 10-hour pay from the district's funds.
Okay. Thank you, Carlos.
Any questions or anything else on that one?
Okay. Thanks again. Let's move along to item six, Director of Operations Report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to inform the board as to a recent lab sample. They pulled on the lead and copper from, I won't say throughout the district, but primarily from Port Isabel and Laguna Vista. And this is a sample that's done every three years. It is taken, TCQ dictates as to the number of residents that need to be sampled. And so the lab goes out and asks residents if they would like to participate. They also look at residents as far as those that we would want to test as far as their, as far as their infrastructure not being old and not having PVC pipes or not having a water softener.
Some of the older, original homes in the area that have copper piping, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Yes, and they try to get those, to test them to make sure that their water quality that's coming through their pipes is adequate, that is okay. And they're not getting any lead or copper coming through their pipes or through any infrastructure that they have such as their water water faucets or anything like that.
But at that level, wouldn't it be more accurate to test that the district is doing their job before it gets to the house and testing that water?
Well, that's been done pretty much. We do that throughout the district. I mean, that, those tests, those tests are being performed at the water plant. But as far as some of these faucets and some of the lines that they have, copper lines and so on, we want to make sure that the, or TCQ in conjunction, want to make sure that those houses for the sample that we pulled are safe.
Wouldn't it make sense to sample the same homes you did three years ago? So you could compare, you know, this house to how they were three years ago?
Well, if the house proved to be okay three years ago.
Well, you would hope it would be okay today.
Okay.
But if it wasn't, what I'm saying is just a new house randomly picked tells you today. But, you know, what was it three years ago? It would be interesting if you would, whatever you want to do.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe there's a standard address list. Like, we have, I think, 30 to 60 households.
Of homes that are of a certain age or?
Yeah, it's like the 1980s when the lead soldering was used. I mean, those were like the primary target of the homes we want to find. And so it is the same addresses at a three-year period.
We've just been through this before.
Yeah.
Just the end use isn't, that's not the water district's issue. That's the homeowner's issue.
Well, we've never had lead issues in these.
That's all. That's just my comment. Maybe I shouldn't say that, but.
They dictate the number that we need, but they want us to test.
I know, I know.
And they sent those lab bottles, those sample bottles to the lab, the qualified knee lab and the lab contacters and give us the bottles to, that we take them out to home. And then we turn around, give it to the lab. They do their testing. They send their results to TCQ and a copy to the district. And we follow through with that and fill it out of TCQ forms. Send it back to TCQ and we give a copy to the resident that we approved. We do have the lab manager online. Evelyn, you there? I don't know if you want to add anything to this.
I don't have any questions.
I'm sorry?
I don't have any questions.
I don't, I guess.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Let's move along to item seven, District Engineers Report. Charles?
Good evening. Have a couple items. The first one to start with is just giving you an update. At the last meeting, you took, oh, yes. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so, yeah, just the update here is, you know, the last meeting, we talked about this Water Smart Funding Opportunity Announcement for the September deadline. And we followed up with a conference call with the Austin Office for View of Regulation and found out they have multiple funding opportunity announcements that are being announced. But really, there's only one where our project fits, which is this drought resiliency projects for fiscal year 2021. And the available grant opportunity through that, through that application is up to 1.5 million with a 50/50 share minimum between local and, you know, federal share. And then also the deadline for that application is on August 5. So that's, it's kind of a pretty short turnaround time to make a decision. But, you know, it's just at least bring it to your attention as far as, you know, the state, the condition, where we're at on the project.
The application is August 5.
Correct.
The, our, what we have to do to meet that doesn't, doesn't come forward for another six months or a year.
Oh, it'll probably be a year and a half before we're under assistance agreement.
I thought it was 25, 75.
Well, no, well, it's up to, it's a 50/50 share. But the limit on the grant side is 1.5 million. And as far as our latest steps estimate, last time we did an update on our project cost, which was in 2017, we were looking at 8.36 million for.
So if you apply, it doesn't matter one way or the other. We still have time to work on it. And do we want to apply? Is that?
That's the question, is if we want to even throw.
One of the, one of the things that I was thinking about when we had this conference call was the fact that, you know, and I think this is just part of a way to keep the investment that we've made already, to keep that going. But more importantly, we need to know from our bond counsel whether this is something that we can handle. Assuming we got our grant, I mean, we got our bond through. Assuming we have everything that's on the table, that we could still meet that obligation.
Right. And in our financial analysis, knowing, you know, he did take a look at it. And we do have a presentation.
The application doesn't make any commitments financially or.
No, yeah, this resolution.
Contractually with the district. It's an application.
That's correct.
Step A.
Yeah, and the action item of the resolution that has to be submitted with the application is just showing our portability, like our ability to, you know, have a local share, you know, if we, you know, proceed with it.
You know, I'm generally in favor of what you're talking about. But I really don't want to muddy up the issues right now with this bond issue outstanding. I just don't think it's a good idea. It's something we can tackle next year. And there's just too much of a chance or possibility that one would conflict with the other. And I personally don't think we want to pursue it right now.
And if it is, I mean, I'm okay with that. If it's something that we, that comes up every year, we can try next year for it. I agree that we do have a lot of irons in the fire right now. And this would cause a little bit more strain on our finances, especially when we always have emergencies or whatever that happens. But I don't want to give up on the idea of reuse. And actually, I talked with Charles a little bit more about this today. I feel that between the reuse and D cell, it's, they're almost competing, almost competing with each other now. The technology is almost competing with each other. And we, that's one of the things I would like to keep an eye on and just, you know, just be aware that the cost of these things is one thing. But the other factor that affects us a lot is the fact that we don't have very many choices for water sources. So, you know, reuse is a real good one. And for us, D cell is a real good one. And I just want to make sure that we keep our eyes on the cost of these technologies because my gut feeling is that eventually, you know, they're going to be very competitive.
Right. Well, and also, let's not forget our third option of just buying more water rights and continuing our reliance on the river.
We can continue buying water rights. The problem is that I don't have a lot of faith in that river. And as time goes on, we are basically cleaning up D cell water from up there. You know, because with very little pressure going, with very little pressure going downhill. More salt water comes upstream. Now, we're essentially already cleaning up salty water. So those factors and the river running low at times. So to me, you know, I make, I think it makes more sense to invest in something like reuse or D cell. Reuse being something that we're always going to have, you know, and it's constant. And we can control the solidity.
Right, right.
So that's one advantage of reuse. The problem with the river is that, you know, we're downstream from everybody. And there's no guarantee that in the future, we're going to add. You know, it doesn't matter how many water rights we have, we can have water. You know, we can't get the water. So I think this is a way to offset those water rights. And if we can afford that kind of investment, whether it's reuse or D cell, I think we need to stay on top of it.
Okay.
All right.
I don't think we answered, do we answer the question or not answer the question?
Well, I guess maybe the decision is, well, there'll be an action item at the resolution. And I suppose that'll answer your question.
Well, we can just, since we're not going to, I don't think we're going to be moving on that. So.
Right.
I wouldn't even consider taking any action on that item, to be, to be honest with you. I think we just need to pay attention to what's the cost involved in the new technology of D cell and the cost of the reuse. And I also think that if there's a way or there's a grant out there that will take into account the investment we've made already into reuse, why don't we put that on the tab and see if they'll fund us that?
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Right, right. Yeah, but as far as that question did come up and, I mean, the fact that it was done ahead of the environmental burns, you know, these federal grants, you have to ask permission well in advance, even if it would have said yes anyway. So that's why it got done without, you know, any.
If they would, if they would do that and slap us on the head and still get the money, I'm fine with that. So it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yep.
Just keep looking for some of those opportunities, I guess.
All right, so I guess I'll move on to the next item on the engineer's report. And that's an update for our water plant number one. You know, there is a lot of moving parts to it. As far as the in-house work, we did have the chlorine dioxide generator installed. And we're in the process of getting the startup going. I guess the latest update on Tuesday, yesterday, was we're trying to get the control panel full of filters up and running. So that's, right now, we can run the plant manually. And so we're working with Filter Magic to get the air configuration codes, get that control panel working again. So that's, that's the latest. We do have some chlorine analyzers on our ground storage tanks that are required since we formally made a request with TCQ about the water plant being within five hundred feet of the sewer plant, which they approved, you know, our plant to continue operating in that condition. You just have to add these chlorine analyzers to those ground storage tanks. And so that's what we're getting set up this week as well. And so, you know, from the standpoint of being able to run this plant on the smoke clarifier, using chlorine dioxide, which will be an improvement for taste odor. I mean, we're pretty much ready to go. And so I guess the next part of this update is really just giving you a status of where Sulu Winston Green was at on the clarifier sign that we approved and the submission of work that will be having an action item on here. So maybe I can hand it over here to Randy and we'll go through a PowerPoint presentation to.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'll take off my mask and then we'll jump in the presentation. But appreciate y'all's time and discussion on this is a very important topic. But we've been moving along very, very well. And with that, I'm going to let Isaac since he's put the PowerPoint together. I'm going to let him jump in. And if there's any questions, I'll be one hand to entertain with him also.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Good evening, chairman, directors, staff. We appreciate the opportunity to be here today to give you a brief update on where we are, are at with the project. So. That should be our speaker. Thank you. Okay, perfect. So the main component of the project is the design of that clarifier, A, remutation. So this includes the drive unit, recirculation drum, circulation tubing, bridge, data from rake arm assembly, piping, valves, among other items. There are several occurrences that come together to make these effective units. So that's the main component of the clarifier, the unit within the basin. So there's an image there that shows the status of the clarifier today. It's indeed a refer. So as part of the project, we're also doing rehabilitation of the basin itself. So we have to do some sandblasting and epoxy liner for the interior of the basin. There is also, so also some rehabilitation that needs to happen on the, on the base, on the floor of the basin itself, just to make sure that no sludge spawns and that the rake is able to pick up all of that collected sediment. So also as part of the project, we're doing all the electrical items required for the successful rehabilitation. And there is some resilientous piping and valve rehabilitation that needs to take place for the clarifier to be back in service. Now, these are a good image that shows what's going on, what we're doing. So you can see that you got there clarifier A, clarifier B. So clarifier A, the notes there show you what we're doing basically, which is a removal and replacement of the 60-foot upco clarifier. We're doing some structural modification that I mentioned, which is the lining, the epoxy liner and the grounding of base. There is also there on that exhibit, you can see some of the other work that is being considered now that will benefit being done at this time, which is the reverse and rehabilitation of the rapid mix unit and the populator units, which may be deleted, but that's another discussion. And then there's also a clarifier B, which needs replacement of the drive unit and the flood monitors. That's a, that's a good, I think that's a good image that represents, shows a clear picture of what's, what's being done in that area. So some of the things that have been completed, we've completed engineering and like the mother stuff, installation of the flow meters for the rubber lines that connect to the rapid mix basin, that has been completed. Engineering for the main office backup generator has also been completed. Here are a couple more images just to show the states of clarifier today versus what it's going to look like in the future. A few more. And here is a copy of our current draft. That's a plan view, a clarifier that we have drawn just to show where they're going to be employed. You can see there in the darker gray, the proposed new unit. And here you got a section view of the clarifier. Now, to give you a better, maybe more engaging representation, we got here. There we go. It's an animation to show you the area of the plant where we're working at. So you've got the clarifier A, clarifier B. And adjacent to the basins, you got the rapid mix and the population units. And you can see there the reservoir as well. We're not working on that, but it's, I guess, a good visual aid to give you a correct orientation of where those bases are at. And here we have the clarifier unit that's going to be replaced. It's a cut section showing you the recirculation tubing and everything that's going to be going inside the basin itself. I think it's a good representation, gives you a good visual image of what you're going to be getting. That's good.
What are we doing at the basin? What kind of work are we doing there?
The clarifier?
No, the basin.
The basin reweight?
Yeah, the pond where.
Oh, oh.
Oh, okay.
Just to show you that where the, where the clarifiers are, that are next to the rivers. So which we just want to make sure we've got all within the model, within the drawings and such, so we'll have that information in case there's anything else that we need to have. But we're looking at it, part of the other thing is we look at the hydraulics ends of it all the way from that part through the clarifiers and all down to the.
I guess the only reason I was asking is because I saw the machines we would want to clean up the pond there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
And I was just curious how's that coming along?
Yeah, that's just the operations where we got that dredger in house now. And so they just basically ran the dredger and reservoir went until, basically, until they got their sludge of those concrete pumps. And so the sludge they got out of there is just set to play it right now, right now to all our water. Yeah, and as far as the pumps themselves coming out that reservoir, that's part of the election project where we haven't released that component of work under this contract. That'll be reserved until after the election, along with, you know, as part of the microfiltration that the main model action. Essentially, you know, the components we're trying to advance are rebuilding the core MPD clarifier. And then this existing clarifier B, this turbine, it needs to major rehab, which wasn't included on the COO's board. So we're trying to request that addition at this time, you know, in the action item, that all of the engineers from home. And then as we did the walkthrough, the rapid mix, and a pop later might be redundant or it actually hurts the process inside the clarifier itself. Because it's one populator, followed by another populator. And so as they get into design, we may be able to just eliminate that, that one step in the process. So that's why there's an, well, we'll get to the actual, we'll discuss it on that. But, yeah, so, yeah. And as far as the last, I guess that concludes the water plant one report. And the only update I have on that generator here for the main office is the fact that we're sitting on plans and specs and, oh, sorry, that we're sitting on plans and specs and drawings. And right now, we're still at the point to where we can, you know, do a request to buy more proposal for the generator. And then we can sell ourselves based on the plans that we have. And we did reduce it to an 80 kilowatt generator. That's the size that we need to have full backup power here at the main office.
We may need it in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Might want to look into expediting that.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, at least we got some guidance for finding the sizing of it and an engineer set to get the components. I mean, one aspect of it, because since we don't have the bid form on there, if we're going to bid it out. I mean, one aspect of it, because since we don't have the bid form on there, if we're gonna bid it out as, you know, to work the entire thing to a contractor, we have to have it printed out here. It's that's that's where we're sitting right now.
I thought I was under the impression our guys were gonna do the building for.
Well, yeah, and so that's how we received the files. So but we still have to buy like the parts, you know, the electrical wires, the generator itself, and then, you know, various materials. Where's the point of having to procure all that?
Okay, thank you, Charles. Let's move along to item eight, consider and discuss for possible approval of amendment number one with SWG Engineering for Engineering Design Bid and Construction Phase Services for Water Plant Number One Clarification Rehabilitation Project.
Yeah.
As explained.
We'd be love to, and the sometimes the information we're discussing kind of blends between the different items. Maybe we can go back to that the one aerial, the previous item, just to show you what's in this, in the tier. In the PowerPoint, I'm sorry, yes, sir. Keep on scrolling along till we get to, we're at there, perfect, perfect. I think that, like Isaac said, that's a great representation. Had some of the items that we looked at and discussed, not only in the field, but but also with Charles and everybody else on the staff. But so the preparations to get the water plant number one really in essence fired back up. So your big clarifier, clarifier A, we're gonna replace all the mechanisms within that upper clarifier like like was being mentioned with Isaac. Clarifier B, your smaller unit, your thirty-five footer, it's got items that need to be replaced within there too. And most of the time with a project like this, you've got a certain cost for your contractor to come out, you get your mobilization, your bonds, and stuff like that. And in some regards, it just makes more sense just to have that one done all at once with a single clarifier, have a single contractor fix both items and both clarifiers. So clarifier B, you've got a drive unit that's gonna need to be replaced on it. And then the launderers that are called out, the red leaders and the arrows, will need to be replaced also with standstill units. So and then also, let me point out the flock units, who we're talking about replacing in the rapid mix also. So that way, you know, your mobilization costs maybe a hundred thousand dollars on a on a job like this with a contractor. That money can now be used to 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 repair that. And that in essence is what the amendment is for. And Isaac, I don't know if there's anything else I'm missing that you may wanna comment on.
Well, yes, sir. One of the things I do wanna comment on is that through engineering right now, through our analysis, we're determining that probably, and we need to make a final determination of that, so that once we do the repairs or rehabilitation of clarifier A, there may not be a necessity to have the flocculator unit itself, as it would become redundant, it would actually hurt the treatment process. So that's something that we're we're deliberating right now on whether we can delete those units, save some money right there, and just go straight from the rapid mix basin directly to the clarifier. And that's one of the things that we're we're discussing right now through our time.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yes, that that looks very positive in that regards too, because one of the things, not not to get too detailed with the water process, but once you flockulate it with the rapid mix and you start, you know, hit it with the chemicals, you get your rapid mix and you get your slower flocculator, they start setting up big, beautiful flocks. And then when it goes back in inside these upload clarifiers, you hate to hit it again in what they call shearing it or making pin flock out of it. It breaks them up, it breaks it up. We'd rather sort of analyzing, looking at that, maybe saying, well, let's get rid of these or maybe change them. Possibility exists, we just totally get rid of the flock units and utilize these upload clarifiers.
Basically, a redundancy.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Right, so it's it's a process we're not gonna need with these.
And you were very wise.
Right, when will you know? We, yeah. We're analyzing, talking with the design team on the clarifiers and ourselves, so looking at this. That's one of those things right off the bat, if we looked at and said, I don't think we need it, but we certainly wanna make sure that all aspects. And I want to even get with Charles and make sure we know what type of polymer album mixture we're using. And then maybe even do some testing or we definitely follow follow the process to see what exactly that recommendation better be.
We we are pretty confident that we will need it. But basically, by the time we finalize what that unit that we're using for clarifier A will know that it's gonna do the work that that flocculator units were doing before. So we're very confident right now, but we'll know very soon.
I'll move, we approve the amendment. I'll second. Motion for approval by Mr. Houston, thanks, Lamus Rabellos, for all those in favor. They are, any opposed, none, motion carries. Thank you, both gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move along to item number nine, Director Finance Report.
Thank you, John. First, I'd like to begin by recognizing one of our employees. Congratulating Orlando Webb on getting his bachelor's degree in information technology. He also has an associate's degree with advanced networking certifications, so we're very proud of him.
Congratulations. Glad to have you here with us.
After you gave that start seminar on the internet, it really made me feel good.
Yes, he's doing a good job. Okay, so second, I want to pick up on our conversation that we had at the last meeting. The board asked that I outline our our repayment plans, our collection plans that we have. I informed the board that we had some 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 people that were several months behind. And so I was asked how we are going about trying to to collect that. So in memo that I filled in your packet, I outlined the the steps that we've gone through in trying to help our customers pay those those bills. But I want to get into a little bit more specifics in our in our discussion today as to how exactly those collection processes go. The the first disconnect notices went out on on July fifteenth. And so personally, I want to let you know, nobody has been cut off yet. But our our collection process begins with that disconnect notice.
So fifty-one total, is that is that commercial and business, just commercial, everything that's thirty days plus?
That is not everything. That's only the people that have our multiple months.
Multiple months behind?
Yes, that's right. So we start with a ten, the ten day notice, and that goes out to let people know, put them on notice that 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 they're going to be disconnected if they don't pay. That would also normally be the time that we penalize people, but we are waiving those at this time, those we're waiving those penalties at this time. And this month, we just send them out to the people that are three months or more behind and who have not responded to our attempts to 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 contact them either by phone or by email and now through the mail. And then we begin about the twenty-four hours more than us before we we cut them off, we start, we start calling them. And if there is no response, then we proceed with the disconnections, usually the next day. If we do contact the customer, they do do respond to us, then we we find out how much they can pay. And so we have to get some kind of payment in order for us to restore the the services. So generally, we ask them to pay as much as they can immediately, because that unpaid amount is gonna be spread out evenly over the the next few months. So we typically ask them to pay the whole amount within within three months. So as an example, if a small residential customer who normally uses the minimum amount has a hundred dollars past due, we would ask them to pay about two months, which would be about sixty-five dollars. And then the remaining thirty-five dollars would be divided up into two payments. And so their their following months would be about fifty dollars. And then the the final payment of fifty dollars would bring them all up current. So that's that's typically what a repayment plan is. But there is some give and take in these situations. We do take extenuating circumstances into considerations. And so from time to time, I do approve payment plans, which are atypical. And and those would usually lead to longer repayment period or smaller monthly payments. So our biggest concern at this time remains that the people that are that are, you know, going into their fourth month.
Beyond sixty days is is a bit excessive.
You've got two really big ones here. Are those commercial accounts?
Yes, so I gave you a sample of 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 some of the the accounts that I'm concerned with. And yes, the there's only about maybe four commercial accounts on on this list. And then the rest, the other forty, forty plus, forty-five plus are are residential accounts.
Those two big ones are are the businesses operating?
I don't.
They are.
Yes, they are.
Keep kicking the can down the road, but it's beyond sixty, in my, in my opinion, that's the.
No, no.
That's my comment. But we're just kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, so this is the reason that I wanted to start cutting people off, because I'm afraid that if they're not responding to the mails, to the mail, to to the emails, to the phone calls, and they're still using, then, you know, I need that additional tools to get the the people to to come in and talk to us and see how that.
You can be sure their cell phone provider is not being as lenient as we are.
Or electric. It's it's a bad deal, yes, I recognize that, but you know, the buck does stop eventually. So if your exposure luckily isn't that bad, but it's still pretty large. I mean, it's, I was expecting to see maybe another bigger number in front of that, but that's, but still, I mean, it it, you know, whether sixty days, ninety days, a hundred and twenty becomes a hundred and thirty or a hundred and fifty days, and it keeps on going and going.
Yes, it could definitely snowball.
And it it snowballs, and you know, once you give up, once you get beyond a hundred and twenty, then it then it's out of control. And it's, you know, so you're not solving any of the problems that we keep talking about this. It's it's a bad situation, yes, and people are being affected. And but this also is a public business. And we have to treasure and take care of it and be responsible with public business. It's my comment.
I support, I support what Scott said last time, that sixty days while also giving our staff, you know, a lot of discretion and making the decisions. I think that we've been very compassionate, and I think we should always be compassionate and reasonable, both because that's what we're called to do as human beings. But we also have to balance that against what Scott just said, our responsibility to live up to the public trust. And I think if you if you let leniency go too far, then, you know, it it can lead to that word getting spread around. No, you don't have to pay your water bill. And so we don't want it to fall into that. So I think we have to be compassionate and respectful and do everything we can to help people when the staff identifies that we need to help them. And when it's time that, you know, we have to ask people to be responsible for the water they've used, I think that that's that we're doing a good job of that, and we need to keep moving forward with it. That's my comment.
Okay. There's no further.
I agree, for the most part, I mean, that they are correct. Both Mr. Lallan and Mr. Friedman are correct in their statement. There, I do wanna keep in mind that there is a difference between small accounts. And I and I think that you guys know and understand this better than I do, because you've done this longer than I have, in commercial accounts who possibly have insurance to to fund them. Small family might not have that. And that's the person I'm concerned about, the person that has to make a choice between groceries or paying their water bill. I don't want to put them in that position. That's my comment.
And I'd like to mention that one of the things that we would wanna be contacted, even if we have to cut the water off, so they can come in and talk to us, then we can find out what the issues are and we can still help them out. There's no way that we're gonna leave anybody without water for no reason at all. So there has to be reasons behind it, and and we'll try our best to help them out. And if it takes a little longer on the on the monthly payments, so be it. But we're there to help them out. But if they never get contacted, or at least they don't try to contact us, we won't find out what the issues are with them. But we will help them out. That's one of the main concerns that we we do wanna help out the customers.
If I may ask, Manny, do you have any comments to add or anything to this?
No, I just, yeah, what John is saying is exactly correct. When I help him, I just want to have him come to the office, told we're here for. And when you see these people that we make contact and they don't make an attempt, I'm gonna put this in a situation of, you're all like, I know their families are probably alone with their kids, but at the same time, we have a responsibility to, you know, they have to pay the line, they have to pay their mortgage, everything else. This is one of the smallest bills that I've get a few days trying to tell. Make, you know, one year, one year.
Yep.
Thank you. Moving along. Okay, and with that, oh, I have one more, just wanted to let you know that I'm wanting to schedule a budget workshop on the August twelfth, that's our next meeting.
Our meeting tomorrow as well. Four P M. or something, or?
Yes, I think one hour should be sufficient.
Four thirty?
That's fine. Yeah, four thirty should be okay.
If they work for.
Sure.
Dr. Lallan, we need to.
I can do it.
Okay. And we'll shoot for a four thirty on August twelfth. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Let's move along to item ten, consider and discuss for possible approval of resolution number one eight zero dash zero seven dash two zero two zero to commit Laguna Madre Water District to the financial and legal obligations associated with receipt of a financial assistance award for port is about water reclamation facility under Bureau of Reclamation Funding Opportunity Announcement Number B zero R D zero dash two zero dash F zero zero two for Water Smart Drought Response Program, drought resiliency project for fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Is this what we talked about earlier?
That is correct.
Yes, yeah.
If we can just pass on this thing.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll take the election, that's perfectly fine. We don't.
No action, let's move along, no, no action, let's pass it. Item eleven, consider and discuss for possible approval of designating Eduardo Salazar, Director of Finance, to calculate the no new revenue and the voter approval tax rates for the taxi unit. Also, as per property tax, third section two six point zero four, parentheses C, the designated person will certify the accuracy of the tax rate calculations worksheet.
So there's a a new law that passed Senate Bill two. And it now requires the governmental body to to designate a person to to do these calculations. In the past, it's it's just been understood that it's me that does it. But now they want a specific board action that does things, somebody to do.
So move. Second, Mr. Houston, second by Dr. Lallan, are all those in favor? Any opposed, none, thank you, much for carries. Thank you again. Let's move along to item twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval of the purchase of pilot kits for altitude valves for the water towers.
Good afternoon, this is part of the restaurant communication with water cap number two project. We want to convert the altitude bands that we currently have, there are one-way flow to a two-way flow. We want to convert the altitude valves that we currently have, there are one-way flow to a two-way flow. We're recommending going with a current main for 21,353 horsepower. We only received one pump, we were expecting more than that. A month ago, we had a bid open for altitude valves on only current main loaded clay ball. What we have right now is clay ball, so we didn't want to get something different for this pilot. We want to be the same brand, so we were very specific on the RFP.
So this was the only bid you received?
Yes.
Move we approve.
Second, for approval by Mr. Houston, taken by Mr. Avalos, for all those in favor. Any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you again. Let's move along to 13, consider and discuss for possible approval of trash pump for the distribution department.
We are replacing a 20-plus years trash pump for the distribution department. This is part of the budget, and we are recommending going with silent de-watering for $4,664. We're basing on the cost, including budget, the pump reliability, depend on customer service with previous experiences, and the shorter lead.
A motion for approval by Mr. Avalos.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Houston, all those in favor? They are, none opposed?
Question, what's going to happen to the old one?
It's still working, but the efficiency, it is not 100%. We fixed it last year?
Yes, we replaced some of the pillars and other parts. At times, we got down, we have a leak, but we can't control the water, can't go all the way. So we had a hard time with this old pump containing the water levels we were doing repairs. If we're able to close, let's say for example, we're able to close, we can still use it, because we can do all the earth pretty quick. So that pump can be utilized, like at the water plant, the weather ward, stuff like that, where we want to pump the water from one pump to another, it can still be utilized. It's just going to take a little bit longer, but if it's new pump, we're having a ditch, and that we can't control the water completely, it'll keep the water coming in, and we're able to do a repair.
Have we spent some money on the one we have now, the past year?
Eight thousand. We spent on eight thousand with the repair kit.
That's the reason I ask, is, you know, if it's going to start costing us money to keep it, I'd rather start looking at some budget, to start budgeting for next year.
As a matter of fact, we just cut it last year, had to direct it to get us a, to that.
It was in the budget.
I mean, after that.
I mean, is there a need to add two of them?
Well, you want something that's going to help you out when you're in jet water, fresh water. It happens with, where that situation.
Well, that's the pump that we were using, the STI when it broke down, we had other ones.
Yes, that's the one that actually broke down.
It's not dependable. We had that big water leak there in front of the.
First National?
First National, it broke down, and we had to borrow a pump from the top of the 500.
Here's an action item. We've got a motion, then, a second. Motion is made by Mr. Houston, and taken by Mr. Avalos. That's right, all in favor? Ayes, there, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item 14, consider and discuss for possible approval of slide gate openers for electrical maintenance at all sites.
Yes, the gate openers that we have, they're old. When they broke down, there is really hard time to get parts for them. Sometimes we need to purchase a used one and start getting parts from the motor or the keypad. So we're planning to replace what we have and add two more on some facilities that they don't have a gate opener.
So this will be for eight facilities until?
Eight, let's see.
So I'm going.
Motion made by Mr. Houston, taken by Mr. Avalos, for all those in favor. Any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item 15, consider and review expenditures from July 1st, 2020 through July 15th, 2020. Everyone reviewed them.
Move we acknowledge.
Acknowledged by Mr. Houston, also acknowledged by Mr. Avalos. And also acknowledged by Dr. Lallan. Let's move along to item 16, we're going to pass on that one.
Need to vote on that.
Oh, motion to acknowledge by Mr. Houston, second acknowledged, but made by Mr. Avalos. We always get that one confused anyways. Of all those acknowledged, they have, yes, motion has been acknowledged. Item 16, we're going to table this or pass it? I guess we need the same thing, so we need to, so we have to go over here next week. Twice tabled, so I guess no action. Item 16, item 17, we're just going to pass those along, is that correct? Yes. Okay, item 18, pass along, no action necessary. I take this to item 19, meeting is adjourned at 6:26 PM. I would like to thank everyone tonight for being here.